Want me to test it? No, I didn't know. Okay. We'd like to call the work session to order. Members present, Ernst Swenson, Peterson, Gerald Rowe, Stumbo, Eldridge, and Attorney Winters. It's 5:01 PM. I'm not sure. No one's called me, so they may be running a few minutes late. First item on the agenda for the work session is the standards and ethics policy that was brought forward in April, I think, of this year and referred to HR and legal. Karen? Why Karen's come into the microphone. I was just wondering, we did talk about the Park Commission. So if we adopt it here, is it? Do we envision us referring it to the Park Commission to adopt it as well?
I will leave that to Attorney Winters. We did not discuss that.
Okay. All right.
So as Supervisor Stumbo mentioned, back in April, this draft policy was brought to the board. And following a discussion at the board meeting, it was actually agreed that Attorney Winters and myself would actually meet to review the policy in relation to our other township policies to make sure that there is no issues between them. And we finally were able to get our schedules together and meet. And I sent out a red line draft of some changes that we recommended. And I guess we can take questions if there's any.
Board members, are there questions and comments? You want to go through it? Do we want to go through it or not?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would just add that I reviewed the changes that you provided. And I just appreciate Attorney Winters' work on this, as well as yours, Karen, and you also Debbie, just for all the work you put into it. I thought that the changes made a lot of sense to adapt it to our township and specific roles. And I'm excited to move forward with it.
Thank you.
I think we should just go through it like an overview, maybe. And it lays out the purpose of the standards of ethics. And it has standards of conduct that says that we shall comply with, of course, the state of Michigan Constitution, Michigan statutes, and township ordinances, policies, and procedures in the performance of their duties. And this is referring to board members specifically. Do you want to go through it instead of me? Or do you want me to? It says, "A trustee shall not solicit or accept gift or loan of money, goods, services, benefits, privileges, favors, of any other thing of value, which tends to influence the manner in which a trustee performs official duties." Any questions regarding this trustee? When they say trustee, that's the Board of Trustees, so it's not just for trustees. It applies to everyone. That if you have any questions regarding the applicability of this section, then you could be referred to the Township Council for interpretation and legal review.
Correct.
Like, and this came to my mind. A lot of times people ask us to assist with fundraising for, I don't know, like a lot of them. Friends of the Pool. We help out with Habitat, Meals on Wheels. We've helped with the robotics teams. So I was just wondering if that happens. We're not accepting it, but we might be requesting people to give donations, like DTE, OHM, McLean and Winters. Is that not appropriate? Or if that does occur, what should we do?
I think maybe if you go back to the actual, the beginning of this, it was intended to try and at least provide a guideline into standards of ethics for township board members that trustee Swanson was able to provide from the Washtenaw County Board. If you go to the Article II Standards of Conduct in regards to the question you raised, it talks about how a trustee shall not solicit or accept a gift or loan of money, goods, services, et cetera, which tends to influence the manner in which the trustee performs official duties. So obviously, in my opinion, if you were trying to sell tickets to a pancake breakfast or you were trying to do something for Habitat for fundraising, I don't think that selling tickets or contributing to them is being done in a way for you to, that would influence the manner in which you perform your duties. Some of these questions that could come up may be on a case by case basis because every time you answer one question, that might lead to two or three more. But in the general sense, the question that you raised, I don't see this as being, that being a problem in terms of this code of conduct.
Okay. Because usually when we do, we send it out to the board to let them know as well. But I just wanted to ask about that because it said solicit or accepting.
Well, I think the key part, though, is that the shall not solicit or accept. It was going to say which tends to influence the manner in which the trustee performs official duties. So there's a second part of that statement is what I think is critical because as long as what's being performed or being done is not being done in a way that's going to influence the manner in which board members perform their official duties, then the examples that you raised would not be in violation of this policy.
That was just, I wanted clarification on that, just in case. Because I know in the past Larry Doe was known as a Ticketmaster. Jean Hall Curry was too, was pretty.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Trustee.
That's exactly what I was going to ask as far as, I understand what the attorney just said. But given to the fact that, not at this time, though, many dinners have taken place and possibly they ask you to purchase dinners or, oh, I'm sorry, purchase tickets or sell tickets. But it doesn't benefit the trustee. So I guess that is an order? Would that be an order, or attorney?
Yeah, that's what, I just wanted clarification.
As long as it doesn't affect our duties.
Yeah. It's not for personal gain.
Not for personal gain.
Community gain and support. Okay, I just. There are exceptions into it that are listed. That was in the draft review. And this is on every other ethics policy that was reviewed, including Yucca. Yes?
It's a little out of the order as we go through it. But I did, just discussing that, think of a question that I had when I was reading it. And it was about, you know, it says that the first under section, Article Four, it says the first organizational meeting of the Board of Trustees in January of each year that will do this. And, you know, as the township board, we all take oath in November and start in November. So I didn't know if that was just a carryover from the county because I know the county starts in January. But that was, I guess, my only question when I was reading it prior. And sorry that I forgot that. What do you guys think about that?
Yeah, I mean, we could change it to November, being that you all take office in November versus January. Yeah.
The only thing is, we might not have the orientation in November because you come in November 20th. That's. But I see. I'm not sure when did we do it? We had COVID, so we had to do it by Zoom. Could it be that it's by January instead of in January? That way it gives a little bit of time for it to happen?
This is just another suggestion, but it could also take place like whenever we are sworn into office. But that might be a little more confusing if not everyone can do it at the same time.
The regular orientation is different than the first organizational meeting. So first. Yeah, you're right. First organizational meeting of the Township Board of Trustees would be in November, is what you're saying. But the actual orientation is, that's like.
Is there usually one? I'm trying to think. By the time you guys take office, is the first one's not till usually December, right? Because it's too late in November?
I think election's November 20th. The first board meeting, I thought, was in November, but depends on.
And I know that we've done the orientation like the last two elections, but that's, you know, because there's been new board members come on.
Right.
You know, so that's just like kind of in, could be inconsistent, I guess. Like if we don't have any new board members come on or, you know, who knows? But I was just thinking that maybe a specific date or something otherwise. I mean, and it's also like, we're just picking hairs, I guess. Like, it's only a couple of months, but we do take office in November and not in January?
If I could help out, maybe I think that you're actually sworn into office on November 20th. And I think that the election is the first Tuesday in November. So I don't think your first meeting as a full board is probably until the first meeting in December. I believe. I think all you have to really have to say is that the first regular meeting of the board trustees in December or even each year that they will have to go over, if we've read, understand these standards. I don't think that. I think the intent is just to make sure that early on in the beginning of the term, everybody has had a chance to read the standards of ethical conduct and have an orientation in that regard. But we can change it to any month. It could be by January 31st of each year.
Is it really of each year, though? I'm just thinking because, I mean, it's every four years, isn't it? I mean, when elections occur, so.
Maybe part of the board packet, you know, how people have to do their W9s and go over the benefits.
They come to HR to do that, yeah. So it could be included in that.
Yeah, part of the, yeah. Okay.
Trustee Newman has a question.
Oh, Jimmy, trustee Wilson and trustee Newman are here. Did you have a question, John?
Could we just mention that it's at the end of the, or at the beginning of the term? Like four-year term or?
If someone's appointed or someone moves on to a higher office or recall. I think if it's part of the onboarding of a new trustee as part of that packet with HR, I think that would be a good place to have people read it and understand it. They also get the other policies and procedures, right, Karen?
Yes. I mean, we could put something at the first organizational meeting of the Board of Trustees following election or appointment.
We can work out then.
We can, I could work something out there, run it by the attorney, and then send it out to the board. If that's acceptable.
Just one more comment. I think that the purpose may have also been, this is kind of a work in progress. And there could be changes and amendments and revisions throughout the course of any given year. And so just to take a few minutes each year on a date served to just refresh that, it's probably not a bad thing to consider only because you may have updates or questions that we encountered during the previous 12 months that might be relevant for the ensuing 12 months. Just a thought, you know, as to why I think it might be every year, but that's your call.
Yes, trustee Swanson.
I'm thinking along the lines of what Attorney Winters just said because it looks like in this particular draft form that the intention was to have people commit to this and maybe possibly look at what might need to be changed because it says all trustees. So it's not really about just educating the new trustees. That's 4.1. But maybe it could just be at the first organizational meeting of the Board of Trustees each year and leave the month out of it. And then there's just a recognition that we reconfirm a commitment to the standards and ethics policy.
And it could be something that HR could actually send out, maybe in December of each year, to, I mean, to the board, to each board member. Just having them review it to see if they have any concerns or suggestions or anything. And then it'd be brought back the first meeting of the year.
A section that was important is that if a board member is presenting his or her personal opinion or position, he or she should clearly state as such so it doesn't imply that their personal opinion or position represents the opinions or the positions of the Board of Trustees. Something we all need to be aware of. We should say resident, Brenda Stone.
And sometimes it's kind of hard to separate your position as a trustee from a personal opinion. But there are situations, I think, where people might misinterpret a statement that's made that would be construed to be speaking for the board, maybe even outside the township civic center. So maybe the intent was just to make sure that you keep your First Amendment rights and your personal opinions, but sometimes you might have to just, for many of you say before, I'm not speaking for the board as a way of trying to clarify.
Right, I think it's good. And enforcement, you know. There's not really a lot of enforcement. But if the trustee has a responsibility to act, if he or she learns of a violation of the ethical standards by another trustee, all suspected violations should reported to the supervisor. Any violations involving the supervisor should be reported to the clerk and the treasurer. That's, then the Board of Trustees may impose sanctions, formal censures, censure, which we have done before. So there is a process to report everything. Is this echoing out there? Can you all hear us? Okay. I think it's great. Good job, Karen and Doug and Debbie and.
I have just two more questions then. We did talk at the first time it was introduced about the Park Commission being included. Is it possible to use what is here to make some changes so it would be appropriate for the Park Commission? Just so that if they look at it, we're giving them something that doesn't require a lot of review? Because I did reach out to them after we had that meeting and asked if they would be willing to look at it. And they said yes, or at least their chair did. So is there a way to make it easier, like what we think might be helpful for them so that they don't have to go through the same thing again since we've got it to this point? That's the first question.
I think we could probably just simply revise this to put in park commissioners. And they're also a duly elected body, as I recall. And so I don't think it would take a whole lot to revise this for them to consider. They are so inclined to do that, so.
Would it be like a second, like a park commission version of it? Or would they be included in this one?
I think I'd have them vote on their policies since they are independently elected.
Yeah.
Madam Chair. I believe it was the board rules that we did, like early on in our term, maybe in December or January. We had the Park Commission also vote on those as well. So just for me and my, I think it would be good to be consistent that if we did that for the board, you know, the rules, then we should do it for them now. So I don't know when their next scheduled meeting is. I'd have to look, but.
We can send it to them like you do.
Yeah, I can, I'm happy to send it out to them and, you know.
So it would be one policy covering the Township Board and the Park Commission? Is that my understanding?
No, it'd be.
No, two separate ones, okay.
But like, when you onboard them and give them the packet of information, they have to sign all the documentation through human resources. We could provide a policy to them.
I was just making sure that we weren't amending this to include them or they would have their own?
Yeah, they'd have their own.
Okay. Because they're elected.
So the last thing I wanted to mention was I just wanted to recognize that Monica Ross Williams worked on this prior to this board being seated. So I express appreciation for getting that started and echo Clerk Gerald Rowe's comments about Karen and Doug picking this up and working on it. Thank you.
Jimmy, do you have any comment? John, you asked a question. Do you have any?
No, I don't.
All right. Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good. So we're going to go to agenda review. And I know that, we'll just go through it. Minutes of the work session and regular meeting. I did a few changes to Clerk Gerald Rowe. And Lisa isn't, she's off on vacation today. So let's make sure we state our name. And I'll try my best to help out with the minutes. And everyone state their name at the microphone. Like I forgot Karen Wallen, I'm sorry.
I was trying.
Okay. Any other changes for work session, regular meeting? Statements and checks? Treasurers' report? Attorneys' report? Mr. Winters?
I think I'll wait until the regular board meeting.
First reading of proposed ordinance 2021-496 to amend Chapter 62 for the adjustment of sewage and disposal rates. Due to everyone's scheduling stuff, we didn't get the opportunity to meet with Jeff Castro, who's the director, is here. But we'll schedule, we can still schedule that after the first reading because there's two readings to this. And if we have questions, we'll get more clarity on it. I do want to say that Jeff Castro, who's been the director of Yucca since 2010? Okay, 12, 2012. But worked for YCUA for 30, 37 years, has announced that he's retiring. I know. We have to handle these things. But I, he's here, it's the first time I've seen him since he actually announced it. I just, you know, he said he'll always be available to help us if needed when they're going to start the transition and hiring and everyone. And Gloria's on the board and Larry Doe and Keith Jason from the township. But you have some big shoes to fill, is all I can say.
I'm taking a lot of knowledge and a lot of history too, but I'll have the same phone number.
Very good. So would you, Duane Harrington is also here from YCUA. Do you all want to come and do an overview of the proposed increase?
Good evening, everybody. It's great to see everyone after a year and a half of COVID. It's really nice. It's really nice to be here, believe it. YCUA is requesting your consideration for a change in ordinance increasing the Township Division sewer rate 2% effective October 1st, 2021. In your material is a draft ordinance of the sewer, is a draft sewer ordinance, as well as budget highlights related to the September 1st, 2021, 2022 YCUA's fiscal year's budget. I'm anticipating at the YCUA Board of Commissioners meeting on August 25th that the YCUA Board will consider a recommendation to the Board of Trustees for a sewer rate increase of 2%. At the same meeting, the YCUA Board will consider a water rate increase of 2% to Township Division customers. The Great Lakes Water Authority has increased its rate to YCUA 2.01% that has already went into effect on July 1st, 2021. The combined effect of these rate adjustments would be a 2% increase on a Township Division's customers' bi-monthly water and sewer bill. A spreadsheet detailing the effect of these adjustments is also included in your material. An average user in the township that uses 10 units of water will see an 89 cent per month increase on their water and sewer bill. So YCUA asks for your consideration for a rate change in this ordinance to increase the Township Division sewer rate 2% effective October 1st, 2021.
Jeff, could you just give an overview? We have three new trustees and just our ordinance. And when the Great Lakes Authority proposes a water rate increase, it goes to the Yucca Board and that process?
The Great Lakes Water Authority reviews their budget every single year in January. And based on their budget and water sales, of course, they decide how much they are going to increase water and sewer rates. Their sewer rates don't affect us because we have our own wastewater treatment plant, but their water rates affect us. As far as the water rates, one good thing about YCUA is we have 16.25 million gallons of storage. You see our storage tanks all over the city and the township. So when it's really hot, like a really hot summer, when many utilities who don't have storage are pulling from Detroit very hard, we ease up on our valve that we pull from Detroit and we pull from our storage to alleviate the strain on the Detroit system. Then when everybody goes to bed, we open up our valves, we fill the storage back up, and there's no stress on them. That keeps our rates low. That's why YCUA, most of the time in the past 10 years since I've been here as director, has received some of the less increases of most utilities out of the 128 contract communities. We mostly receive the less because we run our system very, very well. But they review, they review their budget and then they come to us and they say, this is what your rate's going to be. You're going up 2%, 3%, 4%, whatever that is. Then we will go to, Duane and I will review our budget and see what we can accommodate, what we can absorb. But we have a very tight budget. So when the Great Lakes Water Authority increases their water rate 2%, we increase our rate 2%. So we'll go to our YCUA Board. And if they approve it, then that's automatically a pass through to the township. But when we ask for a sewer rate increase, that has to be approved by ordinance through the township, the YCUA Board and the Ipsilene Township. But then again, the water rate is a pass through. Once the YCUA Board passes a water rate increase, it's a pass through to the township. There's no ordinance for the township.
Well, that's the city division as well, right?
No, the city division is different. They have to have a sewer ordinance and a water increase ordinance.
So what do they do? What are they doing on this 2% proposal?
Well, we meet with them next week, yeah.
And what have?
It'll be the same with them, 2%.
Usually it's the same, right?
Yes.
And just for clarity, the Detroit Water increases our rate to purchase it by 2%?
Correct.
And therefore, we push that purchasing over to the township automatically because that's what it's going to.
The city, the township, and our contract communities all receive the same increase.
Now, what does that have to do with the ready to serve fee? That's a part.
The readiness to serve fee and the commodity rate are all part of the water rate based on city debt, township debt. So everything goes up 2%, commodity rate and the readiness to serve charge.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Clerk Rowe.
Jeff, I'm just like taking all the notes for, because I need your knowledge. We all need your knowledge.
And I'll always be here.
I'm so excited for you. Thank you and for all your service. But could you just explain a little bit more like, so between the readiness to serve charge and then the commodity rate, what actually goes into both of those like buckets? Like what's included in the readiness to serve?
The readiness to serve. The readiness to serve, um, do you want to come in with this?
Yeah. Do you mind?
Yeah, go ahead.
Ready to service is a fixed charge. So whether you use one unit or 20 units, you pay the same amount. In, in theory, the ready service charge covers your fixed costs, your debt payments, um, building costs. The commodity charge in, in tries to replicate the commodity charge. So if we use more water from the Great Lakes, that will reflect in the commodity usage. So that covers the commodity cost from Great Lakes. And Great Lakes charges us in a similar manner where there is a fixed charge that we pay Great Lakes and also commodity charge. So they kind of offset each other. That's the goal.
Okay. So I just want to repeat, so the fixed char, or the readiness to serve is a fixed charge and that includes things such as the debt payment and the building costs for YCUA. And then the commodity rate you said is reflective of the, how much of the Great Lakes water that we're consuming or using?
Correct. So obviously the more you use, the commodity charge, commodity charge is a fixed amount, but it's based on the volume that you use. Versus fixed charge, you could use one unit, 100 units, you're going to pay the same amount.
Okay, thank you.
For example, Jeff, I could just comment on that. The Great Lakes Water Authority, um, has a fixed rate to YCUA. We pay, I believe, $600,000 per month, whether we use a drop or not. And then every thousand cubic feet, they charge us the commodity rate per 1,000 cubic feet after that. And we changed the rate structure, uh, in 2018 so we could eliminate the, uh, minimum use. So for example, elderly folks and people who lived alone who were using two and three units every two months, they were getting charged six units regardless. And, um, so it took a few years and we did a rate study and we eliminated that. And so, um, all those elderly folks and single people living at home, um, using very minimal water, they're paying for what they use now. If they use one unit of water, they're paying for one unit. If they use six, they're paying for six.
The, um, last couple of years is a perfect example why you have, um, a ready service charge. Last year with COVID, this year with a very wet, um, summer, our consumption's not been what it has been in the past. So that ready service charge, that fixed charge helps make, maintain the same amount of money that you need to pay your debt.
This is my last question, I think. So just, I remember, um, Director Castro, when we switched to that different rate where it wasn't just the fixed, it was per the units.
Yep.
And I think you said it was 2018-ish, somewhere in there. And so I'm just curious, like what is the difference now that we see in our, um, our income from that? Like do we, do we see it maintained the same or, you know, are residents actually paying lower or are we receiving more funds? Like what's the, you know, difference of that?
Like I just said, um, 2018, the first year was a hybrid. Part of the year was old rate, the new rate was one of our best years. But, um, '20 and '21, we've, our revenues dropped, um, I won't say significantly, but a good amount because of COVID and a very wet summer this, so far this year. So it's, unfortunately, I'm sorry, there's more things that go into play than just the rate structure. Um, the consumption is obviously a bigger factor than anything else. And when you have two big events that's happened the last couple of years, it's affected us.
And when you conduct a, a rate study, the rate study is based on your current, um, revenue that comes in. So for example, if our revenue was 16 million, our rate study was for 16 million. That's what we intend to get with the, with the new, with the new rate structure.
Thank you.
Trustee Newman?
The commodity cost, is that more fluid? That's more fluid than the fixed cost. So is there a way for the user to control that?
Absolutely.
By using less water?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at.
One unit of, one unit of water is $2 and, or $3 or $2.70? The rate cost is based on each unit of water. One unit of water is 100 cubic feet or 748 gallons.
So is that based on the year? So for instance, if I'm, I'm a resident and I use less water than I did the year before, would that reflect in my bill?
Absolutely. And, and, uh, every two months as well. So if you use a lot of water, water in your grass in, uh, July and August, and then all of a sudden you're not using hardly any water September, October, you may use, uh, in those first two months, you may use seven, eight units. And in the next two months, you may use three, four units. So your bill will reduce. Well, and, well, in the past, it wouldn't reduce because there was that minimum use of six units.
My, the water is 3.41.
Yeah. So the commodity rate for water is $3.41 per 100 cubic feet, which is 748 gallons. In the sewer?
2.71.
This is why we need a meeting?
And each, each 100 cubic, uh, cubic feet of sewer is 2.76.
2.71.
2.71, sorry. Yep. Yep.
The sewer use has to be the same in the city and in the township division?
Correct. The, you mean the rate increase? Yes, the water and sewer are both the same.
No, but the ordinance requires the city and the township have the same rate for sewer because we have our own sewer treatment plant?
Um, it's been like that for the last dozen years, but it, um, it could be different if, if we needed to because, for example, the city's rate per cubic, per 100 cubic feet of water and sewer is higher than the township's.
That's because their water's higher because of their debt.
Exactly. They have a much larger debt.
I'm talking about sewer rate.
Sewer, when we did the, when we did the rate structure, the city does have a, a higher sewer rate also. It's because of the formula that rate Jeff was talking about, the rate structure. We talked about that when we did the rate structure, that, um, at the time, we kept, the, the sewer rates were the same for the longest.
Well, it's in the, it was in the ordinance.
Okay.
It was in the original ordinance.
So, so, um, there, the increase, the water and sewer rate increase is the same for the township and the city, but the sewer rates are different for both, uh, for the water division and the sewer division in the city and the township. And that's based on their debt.
But the, the commodity rate should be the same, right?
No. No, the commodity rate for, for water and sewer is different in the city and the township due to their, due to their debt.
I believe what you're talking about is when the authority was first formed, there were, the county sponsored or backed up some debt. As long as those debt, as long as those bonds were in place, you're right, the sewer rates had to, um, be the same.
Per unit.
But those were paid off 10?
20 years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's no, that's no longer in effect. Hasn't been in effect for a long time.
We. And, um, Tom Daniels.
I look forward to our meeting.
Yep.
I very much look forward to her, so I, so I'm sorry, we didn't have a meeting before, but this is first reading and we have a second reading and we'll have a meeting in between.
Sure.
With the, just so we can get this down. We always meet before.
Yeah.
Always. We just didn't have the opportunity this time.
Madam Chair, I had a question. Um, Jeff, so you said the, um, Great Lakes is increasing 2%. Uh, that's already going to pass through.
It's already into effect.
It's already in effect. Um, you're requesting 2% on the sewer rate?
Correct.
Why? Because we have our own sewer, so they're not pa, they're not passing the 2%.
Right, but we have, we have debt on our sewer plant. We have to maintain that. We just, uh, upgraded our, uh, incinerator. We just spent, I think, 3 million on the incinerator. We also updated our tertiary filters so we don't have to bypass during these rain events. This last rain event that we had, uh, on June 25th, 26th, the largest rain event that we've ever seen here ever, um, this was the first time that we didn't have to bypass our plant. Normally our plant runs at about 25 to 30 MGD. During the 25th and 26th, we were passing through 80 MGD and we didn't have to bypass. And that was due to the upgrade of our plant. So we have to maintain our plant and it has debt.
Okay. All right, thank you for the explanation.
Yes. So thank you both for your explanation. I also wanted to say thank you for including the other community rate comparisons in the report. That's really helpful.
Yeah.
So there's a range of 5% increase all the way up to 12% increase, which is in the report. But that really helped me when I was reading it to understand how, what we're having happen here.
Yep.
Um, how that compares to other communities. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
And it would be helpful if they were broken down by commodity and, what's the other word? Ready to serve?
Yep.
Are they all set up the same way or similar?
Yes. And we have all that for you.
Yeah, and we usually, like I said, we, we usually have the opportunity to do this. And I do know that, you know, Yucca does a great job and the improvements for the, the headworks on the sewer treatment plant will help with the odor and control issues that we were having over and when the wind would blow.
Most importantly.
West, yeah. It was like, we have tried to fix it and tried to fix it. And I think you have finally, Jeff.
Yes, but you know, Monday's not like Tuesday and sometimes, you know, we receive some, uh, different flows, you know, from our contract communities that we have to pin down.
But the headers is at least.
Where it's coming from and what it's, sometimes, you know, it's, it's a little more toxic than, than some days and we have to hunt down why, you know? So the hydrogen sulfide, sometimes it's really high and we have to pinpoint why it's so high. And it's just from wastewater being stored upstream from our, our contract communities. Then, you know, when it rains, they just discharge it to us and we, you know, we have to accept it.
And one time we talked about getting tops for the?
We did that for, uh, some of our sludge clarifiers. Yeah.
That helped too, right?
Yep.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, it's, uh, human waste, so.
Yes.
It smells, but I know that it's better than it was. I, I do know that.
To put things into perspective, our wastewater treatment pla, uh, plan is basically about 300,000, uh, 300,000 toilets sitting wide open. That's, that's what we're receiving. Wastewater from about 300,000 people, um, throughout many, many contract communities. We do our best.
And I think we're, I mean, we are doing, we have spent a lot of money historically on odor control and I don't think it has worked as well as it is since, actually, you've been there, to be honest.
We've done a lot of improvements, adjusting.
Yeah. And sometimes it's the toxic landfill to the, um, east of us that causes odor.
Absolutely.
And people call and then we have to identify it. So you guys do a great job at that, or you all do. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's good to see you guys again. All right, the next item on the agenda is the request to approve the reorganization of the Office of Community Standards and approval of the two new positions, which is a Community Compliance Director and the Staff Planner. And I know that Karen Wallen has had an opportunity to go through and review the job descriptions that, um, were put together. And I also distributed a, an kind of organizational chart that's a little bit different after meeting with Stan and Heather in HR this morning. The only change, um, was the OCS, um, Executive Coordinator will, um, report to the Community Compliance Director. And, um, the Planning One position, if approved, will report to the Planning Director. So, um, basically with the retirement, uh, Michael Radzik, who was the Director of Office of Community Standards and, um, Police Services, we, um, in May, and Jason, Ike Angelo is here, as well as Belinda from Kingsley, who worked with, um, Mike to come bring forward this proposal of the reorganization prior to his, um, retirement. Originally, it was, um, presented as OCS Director and then Deputy Director being Belinda Kingsley. The Planning Director will continue to report to Supervisor. There is one change, a Building Official will report to, um, the Supervisor instead of reporting to the Community, Community Compliance Director. We're kind of sifting through everything. Um, Shane Paltier is also here and he is a Lieutenant with the Washoe County Sheriff's Department. And we got to figure out, um, the bills will be redirected and invoices to Supervisor's office and, um, we'll get through that. He will continue to notify me of incidences and then we put it out to, um, the Board. So that doesn't change a whole lot, although I don't want a phone call at 1:00 or 2:00 AM. Um, a text will work well and I will follow up and share in the morning like, like I actually have been doing. So basically this is a reorganization and we're asking for questions or comments on it. I do think by having the Planning Director, having the new Planner One, it will help out. The OCS Department, which is, um, Community Standards, has building and ordinance and vacant buildings, business registration, am I forgetting anything? Building permits. And they take planning calls. So, um, if we had a person dedicated to, um, the Planning Director's position, they can wait on the customer who comes in, needs a fence permit, shed, zoning verification, things like that. Whereas currently, um, the clerks take in the information and just either send an email or interrupt, um, them during the day to get an answer for the person at the counter. So it will help the person at the counter. And we also believe, um, that it will allow Jason to really do more of plan review, which he does, um, some now, but a lot of, um, economic development, like new developers come in. We have a couple that's come in and he meets with them and goes over the zoning and, um, you know, can spend more time with potential developers. Um, whereas right now, we, after taking in all the information from someone else and he, he waits on, it's just, I think, I really believe in my heart of hearts that this will help service the residents who are asking for the deck permits and the building permits. Everything goes to zoning first. Now, I didn't know this until I had this meeting, but, um, things that come in before it goes to the Building Department, it has to be verified by zoning. And then it is flipped to the Building, um, Department. I didn't realize that and it's probably why they were so busy. Um, and the ladies currently who answer the telephone, they have the highest call volume of any other department. And there's peaks and valleys, like when the treasurer's collecting and during the election, but their peak is always up. They're, because they take ordinance concerns as well. So they're really, even at their low peak is higher than, based on the phone call analysis that they did and presented to me. So, um, the ordinance and, the two ordinance administrators, Bill and Jill retired. And so, um, Tommy and Lindsay was posted from Ordnance Officer to Ordnance Administrator. And there's four ordinance officers underneath, um, the administrators. We have one, um, filled and three offers to people for future employment, which background checks is going on. So we hope to get that in place. I, I think I was a little overzealous when I said August 23rd. It might be closer to the 28th or?
We have a September 7th start date.
I know, I'm always, because we, I mean, we've had two ordinance officers since, when did Bill retire? July?
Beginning of July.
Yeah. So we had three out of six. So, you know, um, I, I very much look forward to having a full staff for all of the employees. Are there, like, I don't know if I missed anything? Is, are there questions? I know Karen, you reviewed, I've met with, uh, full-time officials and with Karen and she's reviewed the salary range for the Community Compliance Director.
Yeah, we would recommend that the Computer, um, or I'm sorry, the Community Compliance Director's salary would be 86,000. It would be a non-union position, salaried, non-union position.
And it'd be online with the Planning Director and the Chief Building Official?
Correct. Correct.
Are there, okay, so I just wanted to, Jason and Belinda are here. If I've missed anything or if you guys want to ask questions, I, you know?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Karen, I had a question. Uh, so I'm looking at the organizational chart here. OCS clerk, what do the OCS clerks do? What is their primary task?
Those are the individuals that are taking the calls, that are scheduling the, um, inspections.
Okay.
Um, people come in for building permits, they're the ones that deal with all of that.
And the OCS Executive Coordinator is? And the OCS Executive Coordinator is, what is that position now?
It currently, what are you asking?
Um, responsibilities.
They're, it's like a deputy. They worked for the Office of Community Standards, like their deputy is what I call it, but it's really like an assistant and.
Yeah.
They do all the administration over time off, schedule.
And they also supervise the clerks. So the three clerks there, that position supervises the clerks, so.
They do BSA training, the position, she does, it's like the deputy.
That's what Tammy, or not Tammy.
Nancy.
Nancy was in, right? And now it's.
It's.
Christie.
Christie, okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, no, it's sort of like an office administrator. She orchestrates managing the folks at the counter, but then also handles all the back house stuff, like managing payments, doing all of the, you know, receipting of cash or any kind, you know, that we have invoicing. Also, she coordinates if we need any kind of office supplies or any of that kind of stuff. So it's basically like an office manager.
Okay.
Position that also oversees the front lines.
And she answers the phone and waits on the counter and she's.
Yeah. I got it now. And then you already have the description here for Community Compliance Director, so I won't ask you about that. I already reviewed that. Ordnance Administrators versus Ordinance Officer, what are the two different roles there? Or what's the difference in those two positions?
My understanding, I am by no means an expert on the ordinance area, but the administrators are going to deal more with writing warrants and going to the court and, is that correct?
Yes.
Doug, you work with them more, so.
Yeah, they actually, I mean, most of the search warrants for vacant properties, they would be the ones that would be, have the skill set to repair and draft the search warrant. More likely than not, they'll be the ones that will actually go into a structure and actually take the photographs and actually write out the notice of violation or condemnation or demolition, be available to testify in court if required. So they're much more involved, I think, in the actual property maintenance violations. It's not that the OC, the ordinance officers, they also do rental inspections, et cetera, but ordinance administrators are really the ones that are really called upon to do a lot of the paperwork, the court appearances.
And then they supervise, I mean, then they supervise the actual four ordinance.
So if they have questions, they often contact the ordinance administrators or like the, they're teamsters.
Yes.
And, what do you call them?
The administrators are teamsters as well, but they are salaried employees, where the actual ordinance officers are teamsters, but they're hourly employees.
Gotcha. All right, thank you for explaining that to me.
No problem.
Good question.
Madam Chair?
Yes, trustee.
With that being said, so those jobs are bidded on?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. They're first posted internally. If no one posts internally, then we go external.
Correct.
Jason, Belinda, did I miss anything in the recap of the organization and the?
No.
Not that I can think of.
Okay. I just want to make sure I didn't.
Just wanted to mention too, on the Staff Planner position, after reviewing it, and I did talk to Supervisor Stumbo a little bit, and I would recommend that that position, this is a new position for the township, but I would recommend that that position be a teamster position. The job description does indicate that they would like a minimal of a bachelor's degree and I believe that would, that would deem that, that would need to be a teamster position, not an ask-me.
Well, their duties and responsibilities are awesome.
Correct, and it could be, we need the flexibility of a teamster versus a hourly ask-me employee.
And they're making decisions.
Correct.
Independently on zoning verification. I mean, if they have questions, they'll of course come and ask, but.
It's just a more professional.
Authority.
Professional certification is needed and things like that, which in our regular clerical positions are not, so it would deem it a little higher.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Karen, I don't know if you had time to look into the, like, salary or what kind of range you'd look for the Staff Planner?
I did. I would recommend a minimal of $46,000 a year.
Sorry, I didn't know, I didn't mean to catch you off.
And actually, Jason had did a little bit of background as well and actually put, put it in the, or recommended it for the 2022 budget at about $46,000 as well, so.
And then, just the only other thing, and I know this is, you know, kind of a, I just appreciate everyone's fluidity and flexibility through this process. It's, you know, a big, big thing to lose someone who's been here for so long and just also wanted, so to thank you to Jason and Belinda for kind of picking all that up. And then, just a, you know, acknowledgement of how hard Lindsay and Tommy, our ordinance administrators, have been working. I mean, they've, they've really, you know, just enough can't be said about how much work they've been able to do and keep a flow, you know, with, after Bill Elling left. And we're really looking forward to having those ordinance officers come aboard, so thank you to Lindsay and Tommy. Mike Gooden did return.
Mike is back as well, so we will have a, we will, once these three start on September 7th, we will have a full staff there, so.
And I, he started, Mike came back last Monday, correct?
Last week, correct.
Well, it happened last week when Karen Wallen was off. You definitely missed her.
Bad week to go.
Any other questions or comments? Everyone comfortable moving forward with this? All right. Thank you, everybody, for the input and we'll keep you posted on the other things with Mike Radzik. He did a lot of things, you know, and he left a very detailed list of what they are and we're, we're sifting through them and getting them taken care of. But this move, this first move was imperative, especially with three new ordinance officers coming on and it's going to be, I think it's going to be okay with the new planner and I'm looking forward to Jason and Belinda and everyone just working together as a team to keep the community going. All right. Karen Wallen, thank you once again.
I just had a question. I, you know, I thought that when I saw it on the computer, the organization chart, I saw that the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office was grayed out. And, you know, when I see it now, I saw that it wasn't. So I was just trying to make sure.
Yeah.
That, yeah, it's still in existence.
Yeah, and currently, yep, it's definitely, good point. I don't ever want people to think that we're not going to have that. The Police Services contract was part of Michael Radzik's, you know, he oversaw that and most, the contract administration, so the invoices will be coming to me and.
Okay, yeah, when I saw it on the computer, on the email, you know, it was grayed out.
So we need to make it, yeah. We, we definitely need our Washtenaw County Sheriff's Police Services contract. Good point, we'll try to make it brighter on that thing if we can. Any other questions or comments on it? Thank you, everyone. Much, much appreciated. If it doesn't work, we'll come back and let you know and try something else. The next item is a request to approve a provider change for vision insurance and disability and life insurance. There's a memo in the packet. We're actually going back to a previous provider that we used to have and there's no changes in any of the people we use or companies we use for vision.
Correct. Basically, what it is, is we have an agent broker that helps us with our renewals every year. And occasionally, they will, we anticipate large increases due to usage and things. And they actually will quote out our benefits to see if we can get them cheaper. And that's what happened with this. It's just a different, it's not a different benefit. It's going to be still VSP Vision, which is what our employees have right now. It's just going to be, we're going to be billed for that VSP Vision through Standard Insurance now versus a connection with Michigan Municipal League. All the benefits stays exactly the same. The employees won't even notice the difference. VSP does not use cards. It's a cardless company. So basically, if an employee goes in for glasses, they tell their provider they're VSP. They put it into the system, bring them up under their social security number there, and they see their benefit. And that's exactly the same way they will do it now. I mean, nothing changes whatsoever, except our premium rate went down. So that was a good thing. Same thing with the short-term, long-term disability and life insurance. We were with Standard before, a number of years ago, at a renewal, I believe it was back in 18. We received a big increase from Standard at that point. Dearborn National was able to quote the same exact insurance at a cheaper rate. So we made the change to Dearborn for the cheaper rate. Reverse at this point. Standard came in with the cheaper rate and actually a three-year rate guarantee, which is a big deal. I was really expecting a huge increase with our disability. And to get a decrease plus a three-year guarantee renewal for the next three years, that was a big deal. So.
Good job. Any questions or comments?
I'm done.
Thank you. Good job. Excellent. Next item is to request approval of the gift donation and license of the use memorandum for the federal emergency, which is FEMA and the Civic Center. Michael Hoffmeister?
Good evening. Yes, this is a license of memorandum of agreement for FEMA to utilize our facility for in-person flood damage assistance. We sent you all an email. This happened very quickly at the end of July in response to all the rain we received. Clerk Gerald Rowland, Supervisor Stumbo, along with the assistance of Attorney Winters, approved it administratively and we're here in front of you today to approve it formally.
And they basically have been working seven days a week here from.
Yep, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., seven days a week.
Yeah, and they were outside and as well as inside using space. So that's a gift donation. They have notified us, however, that they're.
That's correct. Their final day will be this Thursday. They've had a pretty slow response, which is not a bad thing necessarily. And so they'll, their final day will be Thursday and they'll be out of here at 7:00 o'clock.
Well, I was kind of proud that they chose our Civic Center to help with the flooding. We had, what, about 90, I think, homes that flooded between the city and the township. So it was here, it was here for everyone, right? So, and they, they're wonderful and they've taken very good care when they're here, even on the weekend. If I come in, they're here. So we just wanted to formally approve it at the board level. Questions? The next item is just to request the authorization to approve the sale and or removal of excess township equipment. The pictures speak strongly about the need to dispose of these, this material that we have? Some would be good, but not too many. And were required by state statute, right, Doug? I think it's state law that says that we have to offer it to sell for everyone before we dispose of the property. Travis, do you have any?
Not this time.
Not this time, okay. So this just allows us to proceed with the sale of this property? If not, then the disposal of it. The next item is to waive the financial policy and prove AFC Smith Electric to provide services to replace the house transformer at the hydro station in the amount of $17,000, which is budgeted. And Mike Seren is here, if there's any questions. I'm surprised you even got an electrician during this time, Michael.
Thank you. AF Smith is, oh, sorry, Mike started with the IPC Township. I'm over Hydro and Safety. So AF Smith's been very good to the township, always there for us when we need to fix our lights or other electrical issues. And when I called them with this project, they were very eager to jump on board to help. So I did call their companies and I got no response. And some were even local, they're in Detroit working because of the flooding. So I was, you know, happy at least to get this from them. So there is still lead time on the transformer, so I'm eager to get this ordered, so.
Any questions? Michael? I don't want to call him Dan Michael, but that's kind of what you are.
I've been called worse.
Is it all right if Michael and Michael and Jason or Belinda and Karen, do we need them to be at the regular board meeting? Giovanni is one, two, no? I mean, I think they've answered all the questions, but is it okay? Board members, all right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I do just have, Mike, I just wanted to know, when, when do you plan to have the work started for the?
So I, it's my understanding and the lead time changes from day to day, but we're looking at probably three months. So the transformer will hold out as we're having domino effect to causes. That's why I want to fix this.
Thank you.
And we'll make sure all the necessary checklist items with the.
Yes, I will double check with Doug on that stuff, so it should be fine since they're a vendor we use very frequently.
They are good. I'm glad they're local. I'm glad they're available. Number seven is to request to waive the financial policy and approve the purchase of two sump pumps and accessories for the fire headquarters. Today is the chief's birthday and he is off, but if there are questions, he did get three quotes for the sump pump replacement. The lowest was $8,067.58 and the total not to exceed amount is $10,000. And we are looking at changing our, because authorization and bids are $7,500 or less. We're looking at changing, I think YCOA is $50,000, so not that high because they're replacing large sewer stuff and health and safety stuff. But we are in the process of reviewing the financial policy and hope to have that. So then we can, like, get stuff ordered if, as long as we have three quotes and it makes it a lot easier to operate for things that come up. But we'll bring that back to you. Are there any questions on the memo from Chief Copeland?
Madam Chair, so when you said you're working on that, is that why we're often asked to waive the policy? Because there's a lower limit? Okay, so if there is an increase, we might not see as many.
Right.
Waves.
The current, yeah, the way the current policy is written, so a lot of, it would be great if we could get the three quotes to be competitive, which we will still get. But because it says $7,500 or above has to come to the township board and you have to waive the financial policy if you got quotes versus getting bids, which is a formal and no one, people rarely do those bids, but it's a big financial review and it's going to be coming when, Joe? Maybe October, November? That's okay. I know she's working on it.
And Madam Chair, the other reason we sometimes waive the financial policies is because we only get one.
Single source.
One single source.
Yes, you're right, you're very, and so they will look at that as well. Those are the kind of things that are.
Hi, Joanna Neal, Accounting Director. Yeah, we do, I've been working on the new procurement policy for quite a while. I've had a team that looked at it. It's under review now. It's doing some edits. So I'm, hopefully in the fall, we'll have it. We actually have to have it for the grant that we have from the treasurer, the ARPA grant.
The American Rescue.
Yes. So we have to have that out. It has to have in there a grant policy as well, procurement policy. So that'll be in there as well. But a lot of times what people would like to waive for is in our financial policy, they're supposed to come to you first. they're supposed to come to you first and ask if they can go and get the bids or the quotes, which, you know, that takes time to come to you, and then they have to come back to you with the bids. And then... So in order to kind of go around that, they'll just come to you and say, "I've already got the bids that I need. You know, I've got the three acceptable ones for you to look at right now." Excuse me. "And if you don't want me to buy them, that's fine. I just went ahead and did this upfront." So it just saves a little bit of time. So a lot of times, when they're asking you to waive it, they're just asking you, you know, "I didn't come to you first and say, 'Can I go and look for them? I've looked for them. It didn't cost the township any money for me to go and look for them and pull these up.'" So a lot of times, that's what they're asking you for.
Thank you, Doug. Okay, and then the last item, well, not the last item, is request to approve the L4029, which is, this is how we do our budget. We have to set the tax rates. And this sets them so that we can do a budget based on the mills that are levied. So I did distribute to everyone the 2020 tax rate, just to look at it. Giovanna prepared this. So it's, you know, it's a new millage because we just voted on it. So there's no rollback on it. The only thing that... The general operating, we could have levied 1.16, and we're recommending 0.9925, just to keep the totals the same. The only... The fire capital is the one that's rolled back because that was voted on in 2018. So the county puts... Tells us what we... You know, the factors put on it, and there has to be a headly rollback. And we read about headly rollback all the time. This is a good example, that it started out at 0.5 on the fire capital, and it's rolled back to 0.4881. So that's because of that headly amendment. The fire pension and healthcare, that amount is levied based on what the actuarials that are needed for the fire department. That's not voted on. That was voted on years ago. I think the 60s. I think it was the 60s in the history of it. So is there questions on this? It's just a formal procedure. We have to do the increase... The taxable value is different than the increase for the budget, but we have to minus out the Renaissance Zone. So we went from 2020 of a billion, 421,901,034 to a billion, 480,133,552. That's a taxable value minus the Renaissance Zone, which is the American Center for Mobility, and we get a payment in lieu of taxes. We have an agreement with them. It's for 15 years. So that's subtracted out of the total. I don't know what I can... Is there any questions on it? The next item is a budget amendment, number nine. There's a request to increase the budget for the purchase of the trees to be planted at our parks and properties. And this is funded by a reserve account that we have set aside for tree replacement and new trees. I just want to make sure, Mike Hoffmeister, that we include the Willow Run at the end of Hudson. Part of the project was when they put in the wired road, they removed a lot of trees there, and we promised the residents that we would replace them with the tree fund because the noise is greater. So I'm not sure if that's in this number or not. And then the second item is to request a budget for the Loon Feather Park renovation. The board approved the bid from Premier Group at the July 20 meeting. And there is a MD in our grant that pays for 50% of the project, with the township contributing 50%. So the total state grant is $247,965, with the township match coming from prior year fund balance of $247,965. Any questions on that? On the... Trustee Swanson?
I'm just wondering, how do we decide what kind of trees? Like, how do we make sure they're going to be trees that are good for a purpose that they serve?
Sure. So we usually get... Excuse me. We'll usually get three quotes from three nurseries. And then our Parks and Ground staff will work with the nursery to get quotes that are low maintenance, low water requirement, so that our staff don't have to go around and water those trees, and then low maintenance as well. And so, you know, we don't have any major rhyme or reason, but we also utilize the expertise of the nursery to help us with those tree selections based on their inventory as well. And then we'll select areas of our parks that may have lost trees throughout the year of storm damage, or pick particular spots of our neighborhoods that may need some increased tree coverage as well. So there's no real rhyme or reason, but we'll pick native trees that are not invasive trees, and then low maintenance and easy to maintain.
Are they certain caliper, too, right?
Yes, yes. Certain caliper. We usually don't go above two and a half... Or below two and a half or three-inch calipers. So we're spending a couple hundred bucks per tree, just so they're in the ground, low maintenance, and then we always get the warranty on the trees as well.
Are there any other business from board members? Any updates that board members would like to get? Trustee Swanson? How's it still going? Any update? No? You attended the West Willow Association. Okay. I just didn't know.
I would report that the neighbors expressed appreciation for the sign work that was done with the Quality of Life Committee, and that they believe that the signs that were placed are helping. So that's good.
Trustee Newman? Do you have anything to add?
Well, I've been attending the AATA meetings, and that's... They're still in the process of getting information from the users and trying to forecast for the next 25 years just how transportation will look. And with certain issues, so they're still trying to come up with a plan based upon everything that we're giving them.
Good. And you also attended the Huron...
Yeah, the Huron Bridge.
Pedestrian.
Pedestrian, yeah. I went on last week, and when it was at the City Hall. And it looks like it's going to be very interesting. It wasn't as detailed as what you gave, I guess, the last presentation. But from my understanding, you know, everything will be on one side, and it'll connect Ipsy and Ipsy Township. And it, you know, it goes across the freeways, which seem to be interesting, the ramps, which, you know, is interesting. And so it... But to connect the two, the two areas, it's exciting. I didn't know that it involved... I just thought it was just that one area from, I think, Michigan to James Hart Parkway. But there were some other streets listed.
Yeah. And the overall project, and YCOA is involved in it as well.
Yeah.
It's a major project, but the biggest for Ipsy Township is the bridge connection, the pedestrian, the safety, and...
Yeah.
It's...
And looking at the way it's going to be lit at night, it's going to be exciting.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So looking forward to it.
Thank you. Trustee Swanson? I mean, I'm sorry. Gloria Peterson?
I'm sorry. I'll be attending tomorrow the opening of the university loan office at Key Bank. I attended some social things.
Yeah.
And then also, of course, the project that's going on. About three meetings, I think, I've been to. And Willow Run is looking great out in that area.
Oh, yeah. It's just...
And also, if Meta Poly's treasurer was there also. So we're looking good.
Yeah. What do I... We had a successful election, so thank you, everyone. That was my first election. Thank you. It was great, and we did really great. And all of our villages passed. Still continuing to work on... Is one of our point people for the township, for the Forbes Dry Cleaner projects. Still fielding a few concerns from residents around the area, but hopefully, we're meeting again in a couple weeks. So hopefully, going to post that out again. And also attended the US-12 meeting that we had, I think, since the last meeting. And it does look really good. It does, so good things happening. That's all I got.
Excellent job on the election.
Thank you.
It went very, very well.
Yeah. Couldn't have done it without my staff, so thank you to them.
Stan?
Just the bypass update, so everybody knows. The paving of the roads will start in two to three weeks. They're a little backed up with the asphalt because of weather. The company was out of... Without power for four days. What's even further behind is some of the concrete work, because there's so many people seeking that work out, and we just have to wait for our turn to come. But paving of the roads will start in about three weeks. First phase will come to a close in about two and a half weeks, which should begin to alleviate some of the traffic concerns. They are going to leave the pedestrian pathways in as they construct the new ones, so that there's a place for folks to walk in that conversion time. And the call is going to be made here shortly, the DTE, so that they can get the posting of the new lights ready, so that when the roads are ready to open, there's lighting so that people are going to be traveling different routes. They'll have some assistance with the light. I think that's it right now. We've tried to talk about the timing. I know that was brought up at the Neighborhood Watch meeting last night. It's just a little bit difficult to get them to change it, especially when those are going to start coming down in about two or three weeks. So that's about it.
Very hard to get them to change. Janine Dian?
Yes, Madam Chair. Two things. My local, UAW Local 898, we have, through United Way, we have a lot of boxes of hand sanitizer, aerosol cans of hand sanitizer. And I participated with them yesterday, taking it to different organizations. But if you all know of any organizations, or just individuals, or churches that would like some for their congregations or their members, let me know. We have plenty pallets full of hand sanitizer. And then number two, I've been getting a lot of calls from residents that are going through financial issues as, I won't say that as the pandemic wears off, because it's... We know it's still here. But as people are going back to work, and things are getting somewhat normal, and some of the benefits from the federal government may be kind of weaning off, I've been directing a lot of people to the county, Washtenaw County Office of Economic and Community Development, because they have a lot of pots of money, barrier busters, some federal funds that came in, and some other state funds, that can help them with utility assistance, and when they're behind on their rent payments, and things of that nature. So if you're getting the same calls, just, as you probably already know... But I just want to make sure, put it on the record for anybody who is not aware, to direct them to the Office of Community Economic Development through the county, so they can assist with all those different hardships that people are going through.
Yeah. There are a lot of dollars available, and sometimes connecting...
Yeah.
People to resources, because there are lots of resources.
A lot of people just don't know what's available.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. A couple things. The fencing on the railroad track on the Harris... By the Harris Road Park, thanks to Deputy Supervisor John Heinz, we were able to have a meeting with Mike Hoffmeister, and the fire chief actually stepped in. So they're looking at putting a fencing up all the way down from R&amp;L, heading east to June Street, which is on the Michigan Avenue side. But there's a lot of crossover on that railroad, and people have been injured, suicide victims, and a lot of calls for police activity where people running up and down, even with ATVs and stuff. So it will really help, I think, I know, with the crossover that's occurring, and will force people to walk on the sidewalks and stuff instead of going up and over the railroad, and make it safer. For Amtrak manages it. It's owned by MDOT, which is the state of Michigan, and they received grant dollars to do it. It's supposed to happen next year, when we get more information. It was... The National Little League brought it to our attention. And I know Oregon Street and the streets over in Thurston, they had always brought it to our attention. So this is really a good news thing that's occurring. Hasn't happened yet. When it does, we'll let you know. We met... I had one meeting with the auditor, and we bid out the American Recovery Rescue Administration of the Funds. We received the bids back, and we received how many? Four, five? Four. Four. And they were all accountants, and we're looking... So we're going to regroup and see about getting people who can actually do community engagement as well as accounting is very important on this. And I just want people to know that it's easy to say, "We should use the funds for this. We should use the funds for..." Whatever comes to their mind. They're restricted, and the final rules are not even out on it. We do know we can get reimbursed for revenue loss, and we're going to start working on that. And we really need to have people aboard who knows how to administer. So when we had to register for this, to get the 4.8 million transferred to Ipsy Township Funds, I had to give my driver's license, my social security number, and they took a photo of me online. I mean, so basically, my name is on it, and I want to make sure that we administer it from an accounting perspective. We have to do it right, because whoever's name is on it, they're the ones that are going to get in trouble, and I do not want to get in trouble for any of it. And we don't even know the rules yet. So as that progresses, we're going to... We'll keep everyone updated. The only thing I do know is that we've been advised by everyone, don't do anything yet. And so we're doing that. Good news is, we got the money. Good news is, we haven't done anything with it yet. So we're working towards that goal, and we're going to re-meet on that in the next month or so. I don't... I'm not sure when.
Do you want me to share? I just wanted to add really quick. We met with Raina, me and Doug actually, and met just to talk about the bids that we received back, and we did talk about... The community engagement piece was in the RFP. I just wanted to share that it actually was in there. But Raina explained a lot about the, like, front-end work versus the back-end work, which was a great learning experience for me to understand all of that. And just as Supervisor Stumbo alluded to, I, you know, maybe we might need to just think about going in another direction. But so Raina from PZL... Is that it? PZL? PLZ. Anyways, Raina that we always use. She's wonderful, and we really trust her judgment.
Oh, it's Mike Hudson-Ziel.
Yeah, so she's just sort of helping advise on that. So I'm sorry that I forgot to not share that, and thank you, Brenda.
Oh, yeah. No problem. And we did have an internal meeting with YMCA, not with YMCA, but the county administrator and the county recreation director regarding the YMCA, and we're waiting for them to get back to us, correct? And we're going to have another follow-up meeting with the YMCA. We basically expressed the concerns with four of the YMCA's in the state of Michigan closed, and across the country, there were many more because of the sustainability. It wasn't sustainable during the pandemic, because they depend on memberships and scholarships and donations. So for a lot of reasons, we think it should be a county rec facility, and maybe the YMCA can manage it. We don't know. But the safety net and the financial stability should be that of a county government, you know, with us still donating the land and... And, and the reason we had this, um, meeting as well is because we received a Opportunity Index, which is a report that came out of University of Michigan and it's, it's online. And it clearly, um, it stated that Washtenaw County is the eighth most economically segregated county in the United States of America. So we think there, and that the report from health indexes, educational opportunity, you know, the map highlighted it. So in light of that, we really think that, um, a lot of the funding and a lot of the focuses should be on, you know, lifting people up out of poverty, increasing our educational, increasing our health statistics. And so we're really gonna start focusing and using that more on behalf of the community. Um, 48197, 48198. I actually, I carry the map with me now. Um, just to point out, so we can always remember that the goal is to lift people out of poverty and provide jobs for people. And, um, in order to do that, we need to focus resources on that. And the concentration of poverty as well as, um, they did concentration of minorities. And it seems to almost be the exact same map. And if you read the report, it's online, you know, I'm just, Ricky Jefferson puts it under his county commissioner email and I'm gonna do the same thing. Because if you read the report, um, a white person and a, um, black person, there's 17 years difference in life, even if they're on the same economic level. And that is just unacceptable and, and I, it's just, I mean, it's shocking. So we're gonna make sure not only that we continue to, um, better our community and lift people up, but that the county does the same. And I think the state needs to do the same and the federal government. So maybe that's, and them, I do think they're all moving towards that. But if we don't use the report to show the facts to them, they won't do it. I mean, from the road commission to the drain committee, every, you know, just everywhere, um, should really look at the Opportunity Index and changing the index for the concentration of poverty, you know? We need to do something about it. So we talk about it a lot. Um, the 2015 report that came out from Washtenaw County on the housing affordability, it, it had recommendations, very specific recommendations on 48197 and 48198, that we increase the educational level, we increase the income level and increase homeownership, which I think this board and previous boards continue to do. But, um, sometimes people think because we have vacant land, we should continue to do quote-unquote affordable housing. And we need just, we need to remember the Opportunity Index, remember that affordability report, they're independent reports. Um, uh, there is a meeting set up on this Friday with Luke Schaefer, who is Poverty Solutions out of University of Michigan. And he actually wrote a book. I don't, I don't remember the name of the book. So we're, we're really trying to understand the Opportunity Index and use, use it appropriately to help lift our people up and make them healthier and our communities safer in 48197 and 48198 and hold people accountable with it, actually. That was, um, something big that's occurred since our last meeting. So there's new development coming and, and, you know, the retirement of, Mike Razik will have big shoes to fill as well. Um, so we're, we will continue moving forward and making sure that employees have what they need. And the reor- reorganization, we think, will be great for everyone. And we'll keep you posted on that. Um, some of the new development, we're getting a report. We'll start giving reports on new development. We have a couple, um, in the wings, which we're excited about. And we'll, we'll give those updates once the reviews come in and they're getting ready to go to the planning commission. So overall, I think it's going, we had the opening of the Rec Center with the new, um, our new senior director, Nicole was there. And it was, um, it wasn't as well attended as we would hope, but the people who did come in, it was wonderfully laid out and, um, exciting. It looks really fresh. There's a mural by one of the local artists that is in the community center. And I don't know if you all have seen it, but we're also, um, have a opportunity to do a mural on the wall when you walk in, right above the Vietnam Veterans, um, case, to do a long mural there that will add art and culture, which is an, another part of something that we wanted to do, you know, to our buildings and in our community. So good things are happening, I think. And I'm sorry for the long report.
Long chair?
Yes.
I do have one more report. Um, I just wanted to report that we had a opportunity to go to, uh, Clubview Park picnic, myself and Trustee Wilson, Newman Swanson, and also Treasure Eldridge. And, uh, we would like to thank you, Robin, for their invitation and also to the resident and the community, uh, in that area. Thank you. Had a great time.
Thank you, Gloria. So the time is 6:38. We'll take a break until seven o'clock. Is that all right? And staff?
Yeah, I'm giving a hundred dollars. I'm gonna help them make sure that the, the school grants are, we got a lot of things to handle. I wanna make sure that it's a good position. I was very happy to see your response. It really makes us feel good. I tried to do that, but I kind of liked it. Try to give the best explanation. I'm not always right, but I try to. Yes, exactly.
I, I do that. I'm like, Jeff. That's why you know. I hate them, literally.
So do I.
And my skin has seen something.
That's why I vaccinated. Brutus, this is how we all make sure that the vaccination is up there.
Right. And who knows what's gonna happen?
Yeah. She goes, we have lunch. And the wife gathers. She's, she's been at the house for a minute. And so for that, eighteen months, they committed a war, they committed a war. And Jerry got me, uh, went to, uh, saw, I went and saw him. Remember Brian, though? And the record is awesome. So, you know, Andrew, uh, Andrew's brother, okay? So we were very close. He and Brian, yeah. Uh, I still, uh, I'm skating on the baseballs. So I, I was supposed to be in that step, Nate. Thank you. I had a chance to, but I decided I wanted to do it. So they got me. So, he was Brian, somebody called. He started wanting to tell me that, he was saying, oh, he was used to being around. Trying to start a job, so he said, so he, he got a job. Jesus. Is that what it was? Yeah, he says, he goes and stuff. Right. So when it starts, Jerry, he says, like that. Brian's sad in there.
I think well.
And Jerry's like, so.
Yeah. I get lost. I need Gloria to give me breadcrumbs, like to follow.
The first time I thought I was coming in here, I was way down trying to get into some employee room.
Feel like some crazy one was starting to get in here.
We'll be able to say, you're gonna tell us, you know, we can ask you, what's one of the certain this one, this one. Talk about a book taken by. I deserve a little one, man. Five million dollars, man. Right. It's a public, it's coming by the door. And I can participate in that. And so you have a right to have, you should cut it in around my house, probably here's five million bucks. Right, exactly. But don't tell me what you do. Right. Right. And so you have a right to definitely, you know. But he goes, he goes, I don't know what you do. Do you wanna write home, play, come and play, but I'm only responsible for you. And I did say, I got that. We didn't, we didn't talk for a lot of years. No shit? We get along. Yeah. I mean, we kind of, we have kids and we're, we're in a, we get along. And if we walk the time line, I guess. So we meet thirty-three months. We have all worked it out. Well, they chose to, they were trying and I, 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 I. Nobody wants that. That's how it's gonna be. I still think about it. So we still, do one. But you have to say. So, I still, I just love. And we lay down once I hear it. That's crazy too.
Duane, thanks for answering my question.
Duane, thanks for answering my question.
No problem.
Yeah, no, most of it did.
Good.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you? Feels good in you.
It is warm.
God.
Yeah, it's good here. Were you really? Really? Oh yeah. Yeah, I know, it's a good job. Oh, um, John. He needs to wash.
That was one.
Charge of stealing.
They are serious. They have a hard fault, this is probably where.
Are you hearing notes?
No, I just call my daughter.
Hey, wait, here, the. Oh, here. Ten years, I can't believe it, I think.
Good, how are you? I know.
You said yes, for sure?
Alright.
Alright, I'll bring you, next time, I'll bring you a little, this little in between.
Yeah, not always. Shouldn't have told me. I always get a. Yeah. Which is fine. Yeah. And then both ends on the opposite, no red light. The other part. As me that.
Let me know anytime.
I will, I don't really get. Sir, is no piece.
Y C, your town. It was late, so maybe, what issues.
Right.
Where you going?
Like this one guy, it was back this guy and this one guy, until we put it down. So police officer, this, this is a driver's license, driver's license. Guy sitting there in the car. Sitting table with a bunch of women around him, saying, saying all these obscenities to the police, and they're coming to break it up. And he has no legs, but his mom still works. This is terrible.
Hasn't sure if it was just for his problem.
When's your official date?
Um, December thirty first.
Yeah, we got two.
Yeah, I don't think it was. Pretty much make sure that I'm there. Gotcha. Yes. It'd be national.
Okay, alright.
You don't wanna come on the wall.
Get somebody in here at Swift Bay.
Have you planned for travel?
I'm just gonna have, right now, kind of, try to get things aligned, and maybe we'll travel here, but my wife wants to work.
Okay, alright.
I have my grandson now, he's only two, so, you know, it's nice to see him too, so there's some changes. But it's been thirty seven years. They say, they say my mom, when it's time to go, you're gonna go, it just hit me, it's like. It just hit.
How are you?
I'm good. Duane.
Alright, trust me Jimmy Wilson. Nice to see you.
I think I've seen you before.
Oh, absolutely.
Been awhile, but.
Once a year. Unfortunately.
Always come to ask for money.
So, yeah, it comes to operating problems, because they go on. So we tried to reflect on it.
It's been a little bit, it's been a long, long day.
Chemical stuff that goes in.
You run a good operation.
Yeah, very nice. It's been, one of the two recent. It has been extremely warbling, like someone's word falls out of their.
That's my favorite.
My too. My too, I'm holding, leaves change. It is.
How are you?
I'm fine, how are you?
Got to know where it's, it's residential input, right?
I apologize, it is, um, seven oh one, if you'd stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You remain standing for a moment of silent prayer. Thank you, at this time, there's public comments, people have three minutes, if you would address all the comments to the chair, and you can also comment on each agenda item. Are there any public comments at this time? Hearing none, we'll go to the consent agenda, we have the minutes of the July twentieth work session, a regular meeting, statements and checks, and the treasures report for July of twenty twenty one.
May the chair salute. Support.
Motion Eldridge, support Wilson to approve the consent agenda with some minor changes on the minute. Any questions or comments from board members or public? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying. Attorney General Legal Update, Mr. Winters?
I think most of my captive audience was dismissed at the, this meeting began, but I will give my attorney report, because I think it's important to follow through on some of the things that we've been discussing, because this has been a very, very difficult summer at times, dealing with post-COVID issues, and the township has had to deal with two extremely time-consuming, I say that, you know, without any, without any understatement, time-consuming legal issues, one of course involving the crematorium at one one zero six East Michigan Avenue. And sometimes we don't just, um, sometimes we have so many things going on, we don't really take the time to just step back for a moment and just see really what has happened to our community in terms of the impact this crematorium and the way it was mismanaged has had upon the township and the fallout that we still continue to deal with even today. On August tenth, uh, Channel Seven News reporter Heather Cutello did a almost six-minute expose on Channel Seven News in regards to the crematorium. And the material that she had requested of the township through FOIA was granted, and she used a great deal of that material, and it's still available to all of you via a link, I was going to send that over, just ran out of time, um, before this board meeting. But the five, six-minute, uh, report that she did, uh, just reinforces everything, and I mean that everything that this board has, has tried to do to obtain ans, amps answers from the state of Michigan as to how this happened, the details of what they're going to do to hold the per people responsible for this, and just exactly what the township, uh, what, what actually can the township, uh, do in terms of also being involved in overseeing the, bringing this issue to closure. And in that regard, on this Channel Seven report, uh, you'll see when you go there that the funeral person, Mr. O'Neill Swanson, and they go back and talk about how his mortuary science license had been revoked back in twenty eighteen for doing basically the same thing in Flint that he did in Ipsy Township, uh, having decomposing bodies at the Flint Funeral Home for long periods of time, being convicted of felony conversion of funds under the prepaid Funeral and Cemetery Sales Act, not being eligible to hold a controlling interest in a cemetery or crematory, but yet somehow, in conjunction with his wife, slipped through the oversight of the state of Michigan and, um, dead down here, what I think is just absolutely, you cannot find enough edutists to describe what went on down here in Ipsy Township, and how yet, uh, we have, we have to, we, uh, have received any further follow-up. We understand investigations take time, we also understand the sensitivity of criminal investigations, but at the same time, when you have, um, Channel Seven Action News reporting themselves that from our records, there were fifty-five bodies stacked too deep in cremation containers, I won't go through all the details of everything else that was discovered during that inspection, having those bodies there, uh, they were not embalmed, and the thermostat being set at seventy-seven, seventy-eight degrees, uh, family members being interviewed by Channel Seven Action News, uh, just being totally devastated to, to find out that their loved ones that they had paid for cremator, for cremation, uh, had been in this building for a great deal of time, one of which at least goes back to two thousand eighteen. The one thing that did come out of this Seven Action News report is that Ipsy Township, upon learning of what was going on over there, um, acted immediately to condemn this building, take the responsible parties to court, and, um, in fact, we're in court right now, there has been, uh, a company hired to do the cleanup, actually this passed, um, on August the fifth, and people sometimes wonder what our inspectors and other people do on day-in, day-out basis. On August the fifth, a full-blown inspection was carried out inside the crematorium by Chief Building Official Dave Bellers, Building Inspector Todd Barber, Electrical Inspector Bill Bombs, Fire Marshal Dan Kimball, and Ordnance Ministerial Tom Greenwood, to actually get in there and inspect this building, because they were not allowed to inspect it at the time due to the biohazards that were going on inside the building. And earlier today, there is a, uh, two hundred pages, uh, of their report that was delivered to Denny and I in regards to the just horrific conditions that still exist inside this, uh, building, and now it's incumbent upon the township to follow through to, uh, see that this building is in fact demolished. The only point I'm making, or one of the points I'm making on this, is that this takes a tremendous amount of time and effort away from what the township could be doing, and for so many other situations, and at some point in time, I don't think we can just say the case closed, we, we were successful in having, uh, the bodies removed and properly cremated in other licensed facilities, and we did that very, very quickly. You may recall the state of Michigan wanted to take six weeks to do it, uh, by utilizing the same building in which they had, it was not functioning properly, uh, the township just drew a line in the sand and said, no way in the world will we, will we want to be part of that, that, that type of proposal, and so we did that quickly to make sure they were properly, uh, removed and cremated, but this story is not yet closed, I don't think it has, from our standpoint. We need answers, we need a full report, we need a full accounting, and if appropriate, we need criminal prosecution, because this is not the way you do things in a civil society, there are rules, they have to be obeyed, and there are certain behaviors that are just simply not acceptable, and this one is, again, reported on Channel Seven News on August the tenth, just, uh, less than two weeks ago, and they're still, we're still dealing with this issue. I was pointing that out because Brenda went through a reorganizational chart tonight about all the different people that do so much, and you gotta keep in mind that this whole inspection took place on August the fifth, when the township was down significantly than what we're going to be in the months ahead, so it's like all hands on deck, and that is not, uh, it's not fair to the township, we'll do it, but it's simply over and above what the township should be having to deal with. So that's one of the issues that, uh, still has, uh, made somewhat very, very, you know, upset with what, and again, the, the state has to be held accountable as well as the. again, the state has to be held accountable as well as the Mr. Swanson. The state has oversight responsibility through LARA, which is the Licensing Regulation Authority. They're the ones that have the authority, and they're the ones that need to be held accountable. And I can't help but just think sometimes what their response and reaction would have been if this had occurred in another location in this state. No, you have to raise that question in your mind, are we being treated differently when you see what happened down here and their response to that? So the other issue that I'm going to address because I don't think anybody's here this evening, and it's not to say I told you so, but in some ways it is, I told you so. At the last two board meetings, we've heard from people, including Judith Pontius, that the township had been doing things very, very unfair in regards to her desire to operate a medical marijuana grow-up in a residentially zoned district specifically at 1196 Lester Avenue. At the last board meeting, I went into detail and the history behind the Medical Marijuana Act and that the township had enacted a zoning ordinance that required medical marijuana grow-ups to be located in industrial zone districts, not residential. That's the reason why it came to our attention to begin with, because neighbors living next to this grow-up could smell the harvesting of marijuana. So why am I talking about it tonight? Why am I saying I told you so? Well, because on July 14th, when we appeared before Judge Conkey via Zoom, Judy Pontius, prior to that hearing date, had gone on a media blitz and told everybody that she was a caregiver and that she was willing to go to jail if necessary, to continue to do what she thought she was authorized to do, and that she was going to keep on growing her plants for her patients. On July 14th, the attorney appeared before Judge Conkey and for the first time said, nope, she's not a caregiver anymore. Those 55 plants are for my personal use. I'm not a caregiver, they're my plants. I'm going to, and I'm entitled to keep all 55 plants because under a Section 8 of the Medical Marijuana Act, that provides me a defense if I can show that a medical doctor recommends that I need more than the normal 12 plants for my medical condition, even though the Section 8 is only for a criminal prosecution, not for civil matters. But he raised that during the July 14th hearing, that many of you watched via Zoom. At that time, I said, last meeting, Section 8 is not applicable in this situation, it's not a criminal case, it never has been a criminal case. And at the same time, there is no doctor, in my opinion, that's going to come in and testify that I need 55 plants for personal use, and that it was, it was nothing more than a ruse to buy time to allow Judy Pontius to do what she really wanted to do with those plants between July 14th and the present. And I say that because after the July 14th hearing, the court set a scheduling date for an evidentiary hearing to be held on August 20th. So July 14th is, you know, three, three weeks ago, four weeks ago. And so here we are now on August 16th, August 17th, with a hearing scheduled for August 20th, in which the attorney is supposed to explain to the judge why she has a right to keep 55 medical marijuana plants for her personal use. He was supposed to file a legal motion and brief to that effect by July 30th, and the township was to respond to that by August 12th. So here's what, here's what we received on July 30th. Here's what we received from the attorney. So everybody that's out there yelling at me in the hallway, here's what they, here's what they said to, here's what the attorney said to the court and to, because we've not made this part of the record, here's what email I received, addressed to Mr. McLean and Mr. Winters. "In preparation for my brief and in review of the applicable law, I agree," this is Barton Morris talking, it's not Doug Winters, Denny McLean talking, "I agree that we cannot use Section 8 as a defense to the argument that my client is entitled to be in possession of 55 plants. And even if Section 8 did apply," which obviously it doesn't, "Miss Pontius was technically in violation of the court's order when she did not arrange for the sheriff to count the plants or reduce her plant count before June 21st, 2021. I therefore will stipulate that my client was in violation of the court's order, and we are prepared to address the court about any penalty to be imposed. We are no longer asserting that she is entitled to have 55 plants for personal use." So this whole thing has been nothing more than a game. It's been a game where basically you go to court, you tell the judge, first of all, I'm a caregiver, no longer a caregiver, 55 plants for my personal use, nope, I can't use them for personal use, therefore, you're right, I'm in contempt of court, and let me plead my case and try to persuade you as to why I should not get a penalty. The point I'm making in all this, this has been a colossal abuse of this township, of this board, of our office, of having, and all that we started out doing was simply to enforce a locational restriction on where you could operate a grow-up, and to make sure that if you're going to do a grow-up, that you did it in an industrially zoned district, not a residential zoning district. And this is what we had to go through, just to simply now reach a point now where the person says, you know, you're right, I was wrong, I'm in contempt, we're no longer asserting. So was there enough time to harvest the plants? I suppose it was. Was that enough time to get the marijuana fully, you know, cultivated to where you can allocate, yeah, I guess it was. But it also was an abuse of the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Department because on the morning of the July 14th hearing, even though the Sheriff's Department is running from pillar to post in this township on numerous calls, they had the audacity to have two deputies come over to their house to count the, count the plants, only to confirm that she still had 55. There was no reason at all to tie up the Washtenaw County Sheriff's deputies to come over there and count the plants in a civil case when she now knows that she was in violation of the court order. And again, it's abuse of the court system, it's a misuse of the court system. Tonight, this board is going to consider perhaps adopting an ethical policy as to how you're going to govern yourself. The attorneys in this state also have to take an oath to provide, to abide by the professional rules of conduct, and we cannot ever be misleading to the court. I believe this is exactly a classic case where someone just threw up a bogus defense, asked the court for an evidentiary hearing to be scheduled four or five weeks out from the date of the hearing, and then on the day of the hearing, prior to the hearing, saying, no, I didn't mean it, we're in violation. So that's the reason why I wanted to wait this evening to give this report during the regular board meeting. I expected more people possibly to be here to hear the truth. But, you know, so, but that's the truth, and that's, again, something we'll deal with this coming Friday because we intend to ask the court, and we advised the court, included in our response, that email that I just read to you where it was clear, there was, there was never a genuine dispute in regards to what the truth was in regards to the legality of possessing more than 12 marijuana plants. So that, you know, we'll see what's left of this after we go through the court hearing on Friday. Following up on the supervisor's report, before I go there, I just can't, but go back to the one comment I made during the last board meeting about how when you continue to change your position in court and try to dance between raindrops, that sooner or later, you're going to get wet. And this is exactly what I think has happened here right now, is that dance between raindrops has ended, and it's now turned into a downpour. And by in regards to the time it takes for, away from us to deal with this, on these issues, be it the crematorium, be it the 1196 Lester Avenue Medical Marijuana, it's not fair to the township. We are dealing with a lot of issues on the American Rescue Plan, and as Heather mentioned earlier, we are trying to determine just what has been the township's revenue loss during the last year or two. We do know we've had substantial revenue loss in regards to the 14B District Court, and those are some of the things that we're going to be looking at to see exactly what we might be entitled to be reimbursed from. Brenda also mentioned the Opportunity Index and the Housing Affordability Study, and we've known for years, those of us who have lived our entire lives in the eastern part of Washtenaw County have known for years, they've always been two, two parts to Washtenaw County. Carpenter Road has been the dividing line, although in the Opportunity Index, they said it was US 23, which pretty much runs, you know, east and west like Carpenter Road does. But we do know right now that in spite of the recommendations of the Housing Affordability Study, that developers continue to come to Ipsal Township to try and have us become the affordable housing option for the city of Ann Arbor, and for Pittsville Township, and for other communities to the west of us. We know right now that it takes a lot of organization on our end to try and beseech our county commissioners to look out for our best interests and make sure the county tax dollars that we send over are coming back to us in a fair manner. The Opportunity Index shows otherwise in regards to opportunities with its education, with its healthcare, with its jobs. Right down, right down the line, we're not being, we're not being given a fair shake in eastern Washtenaw County, we never have. And at the same time, right now, we only have one chance to get it right with the ERP funds that the county's receiving, as well as the funds that we receive to try and make a difference in some of the things that we legally can make a difference in. And I think right now that the full-time officials are extremely committed to ensuring that our county commissioners support a recreational facility to be built on eastern Washtenaw County, even on township property, much like they promised to do or were willing to do 10 years ago, 12 years ago, on Water Street, in which they were willing to put $15 million in that facility, which never came to fruition. We have property they can use to make this happen if they have the wherewithal to do so. So there's an awful lot of issues that continue to come our way, and sometimes, you know, even talking with the full-time officials and all of you trustees, it becomes a little bit overwhelming at times just to, just trying to keep up with all the different things and trying to prioritize, because just when you get ready to prioritize this issue, a crematorium issue comes along, and you got to make that a priority, and then you got to go back to a court proceeding on something that was bogus from the very beginning. And so, all that aside, I really appreciate everything that the Building Department and OCS Department continues to do, even during the time period when they've been short-stamped. The leadership has been extremely accessible to anyone who has an issue that needs to be answered, and didn't mean to take so much time tonight on those two issues, but because of what the township has gone through during the last months of June, July, and August, and still going through this, I thought it was important to at least go on the record and talk about those two specific issues tonight, as well as the other issues that was brought up by Supervisor Stumbo, which are extremely important and need to be dealt, need to be dealt with in a very professional manner by the Washtenaw County Board. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from Mr. Winters? Trustee Eldridge, I mean Treasure Eldridge?
Same difference. I used to have a couple. Doug, thank you. I wish more people were here. I used to have a question on both, because I'm not going to put one over the other, but you're right, everybody needs to be held accountable. I mean, the seven of us, yourself, Shane knows in the back room, and again, when I was in police work, we're held accountable, we're officers of the court as well. And so I get a little bit infuriated when others aren't held to that same standard. So, and you hit it on the head, if we were another community, would either of these cases arisen the way they did here? And so I think it's a point now where it's incumbent on us as a board to take a stand to let others know, we're just not going to allow this township to be used in such a fashion any longer. So I would ask that we pursue cost recovery in both cases, whatever that might encompass, whether it's our staff time at the crematorium, attorney time, I know deputies were out there in that case. In the case of the marijuana, I would ask the same thing. Can we add those costs up for our attorney's time, for our staff time, the deputy's time that went that day? Because again, they were taken away from cases that could have arisen that were life-threatening for something that in the, in the, end of the day, just didn't matter. So I would ask that we compile a list, and I would hope that the board would authorize the attorneys to seek the maximum amounts in cost recovery in both of these cases. And then I would ask, what do we do in the case of the attorney who knowingly, and I guess you always have to prove it, but I think he knowingly knew what he was doing, how do we get that before the Judicial Tenure Commission in Lansing for sanctions on that attorney? Whether they ever agree with us in Lansing on that, I think we at least have to pursue that so others know that you can't go into court and mislead a court, because if we allow it to happen today, it'll happen again next week, next month, or next year, and it'll begin to multiply. So I think at some point, we have to take a stand as a board and just not look the other way any longer and go, well, we told you. We now have to make sure that we seek every possible sanction that we can. And in the cost recovery, if there were 55 plants, Doug, there has to be a way between us, Shane, and others to figure out what is the value of those plants and include that in the cost recovery. Thank you.
Well, in the case of the marijuana case, I did send over to last night the board, for the board, a copy of the memorandum that Denny and Paul Barnett worked on to file with the court, and they are seeking all the attorney fees and sanctions for the court hearing coming up on Friday. So that will be, that's, that's a major thrust of the hearing on Friday, is for sanctions and for court, for court, attorney fees, court costs. And we'll have to make our case before the judge. I think that, in my opinion, if there's ever a case that cries out for that, this has to be, if not, if not, if not here, then I don't think I'll ever see in my lifetime a case where it will be warranted, because this whole hearing was predicated upon someone saying, I have a legal right to assert this defense and to make my case, and then say, no, it doesn't apply. I was, you know, I was just kidding. And so, I mean, that's one issue, and we are seeking that. In regards to the crematorium issue, I think there are some avenues that we need to explore once we get our final report back from the state, because this is, it's unfair to put on a community, you know, in fact, in these Channel 7 report, there was a quote from one of our ordinance people where he's quoted as saying, there are just some things that he has seen that he doesn't think he will ever be able to ever unsee again. So there's been some impact upon our staff and upon people's lives that had to go in there and do what had to be done. And trying to, trying to reduce it to a cost, sometimes it's difficult, but I agree that we need to seek every option available for cost recovery because this did take a tremendous amount of time, energy, and township expenditures to deal with this issue.
I have a question in regards to that, because I know in the past, there's like a threshold in order to ask for attorney fees, correct? like a threshold in order to ask for attorney fees, correct?
Well, it, I don't know.
I mean, most, most of the times, we don't ask for that, and other attorneys don't ask for it, but is there a legal threshold? It was unnecessary?
I think that when, when you assert a frivolous defense, which it is, then the court can actually award actual attorney fees, the actual cost. So what's, what's, and the other side can actually have a hearing to determine if the actual costs are reasonable or not, but the first step is actually getting the judge to actually order that the township is entitled to actual attorney fees.
Right.
And then, then we can argue if they dispute something. But in this case right now, I've never seen anybody actually go to court, stand in front of a judge, all the media, you know, on the person, saying, I have a valid defense. I have a, I have a defense as to why I can keep 55 medical marijuana plants, and I'll be able to show it to you, Judge, if you give me an evidentiary hearing. And then when, when, when the rubber hits the road, and the moment of truth arrives, you say, well, no, I agree that I cannot assert that as a defense, and furthermore, I admit my client was in contempt. Never seen that before. Never seen that before.
So that hearing, that, that particular hearing would be for the attorney fees?
Well, on, on August the 20th, this Friday, we're, we're going for this hearing for the, for the purpose of seeking sanctions against the, you know, Judy Pondus and her attorney for what they, what has occurred here. That date was already set by the court.
Right.
They didn't file anything but the email saying, we, you know, we're in violation. So, so everything that was done up until that point has all been at our expense.
Right. That's, I thought, okay. I was trying to under, I know that it's, it's not like, we don't normally request that. I mean, it has to be at a certain level, like you stated, when you assert a defense, and there was no written brief on it at the hearing, they said, scheduled a court hearing for it, we prepare for it, and then they decide that, yeah, you're right, we don't have a right to that. So that's unusual circumstances for the court.
That's, that's putting it very kindly, because
I know, I'm trying to.
The, the truth of the matter is, is that, I don't like to say this too often, but Denny and I have been practicing for 40-plus years, I'll leave it at that. And so, we take an oath, and we take it very seriously, and I'm embarrassed that for the board to have to release, you know, this is not really what most attorneys that I've worked with, this is not how they behave.
Right.
This is just not. And sometimes you get caught up in things that happen on the TV and on the motion picture screen, but in all honesty, most, these things don't happen like this. I have never seen this happen quite like this. You can disagree, and that's why you have someone, that's why there's a fourth, that's why there's a, there's a Supreme Court with nine judges, and sometimes a case is decided five to four. One vote could change the whole outcome. That's, that's fine, I can live with that. This year, there was no good faith, it was totally disingenuous, it was just simply an effort to buy time, to allow those plants to be harvested. And that's what really came down to, and hopefully the court will see it that way.
And I know during the public comment period, there was a statement made that, you know, the township board would change their mind if they had someone, family member who had cancer and needed, you know, medical marijuana. Well, several of us have and have had access to it and we're thankful for that. This was about a zoning issue. It's, it's not about the need for using it for medical purposes, and now it's actually approved for recreational purposes, but this is, this is really about zoning, not about medical marijuana, and the need to have, you know, that as a treatment for a lot of people, because they do use it. But anyways, so, the hearing's the 20th?
It's coming Friday at 1:30.
And I also know Parkwood came up, Doug, today, that this popped up, this is another example of things that just pop up.
I, I know that Belinda and Brenda, it sounds like Thelma Louisa, it was Brenda and Belinda going out, I think it was going out on the tour of the township, and they, long story short, we have found what appears to be a large-scale cutting operation going on on Parkside that violates site plan, violates soil erosion, violates the woodland tree protection ordinance, it violates everything you could possibly have in the township's zoning ordinance. And because they, there was a stop-work order that was posted, they've ignored that, they've continued to work. Belinda was thrust into this role here very quickly, but between her and Brenda and Denny, I think they had their arms around this issue to try and seek an emergency restraining order tomorrow, if we can, because they're just going full
Yeah.
Well, and Belinda may have more details even than I do right now, because this was happening, I think, in the last 24 hours, the operation going on out there in Parkwood.
Yeah.
But hopefully the full-time officials have authorized Denny and to work with Belinda to file the necessary lawsuit, because they're cutting trees, and Brenda might have more details to
Yeah, when, when the phone call on Friday came out that they were clear-cutting a five-acre parcel of land on Parkwood, which is over by, Stan and I had previously reported some issues going on there on our tour, we do lunch tours too, and, but this is a five-acre parcel, was completely wooded, and they clear-cut the entire parcel. So on Friday, they, Monday, no, Friday, they posted a stop-work order, and they continued. It is, and their intent was to make it for parking for semis, is what we think, no one had, people haven't approached the planning department before, and you have to go through a site plan, you have to do it properly, and they just clear-cut the entire five acres. So under the emergency orders process that we have, the, Denny McLean contacted, and Belinda were working together, and the three full-time officials, if two of, the three of them authorized it to hurry up and file the emergency petition in order to stop whatever they're going to do, there's going to be, I don't know if they will listen to us or not, but unless we, we need some other order, because they totally disregarded what the ordinance administrator posted as stop-work order, and the building was involved, a lot of people were involved, but this is just an example of what occurs. Thank God for the residents and business owners who let us know so that we can go out and react to it fairly quickly, like the, you know, crematorium, that happened too quickly, but, so, it'll come back for formal board approval at the next board meeting, but I just wanted to update the board on that occurring today. Does that conclude your report, Mr. Wrenner?
Well, I guess it does. Heather gave me a cup of coffee, it's going to be going tonight, so I guess it's probably the last cup of coffee I'll get for, never again. Okay.
Try decaf next time. We'll move on to number four. Thank you. Doug and Stan, your suggestion, yes.
I guess my concern too is the how interrelated things are. So if you go clear-cut something and you don't follow through with things, we've got vermin issues, so that means the vermin all get disrupted, because they've been in a place where they've been living, where there's probably food sources. So all this stuff is interconnected, and for someone to, for a group of people to disregard the process, it may be that that would be allowable if you move through the process, but the process also allows for planning for that. Like if this happens, and it's going to set off vermin, then we can, we can make adjustments for that. We can't do that if people make that decision on their own, which then impacts neighbors, which impacts township costs, because, you know, we've worked so hard to try and address the vermin issue and the baiting, but when you do that kind of clear-cutting, you're pushing not just vermin, you're pushing any kind of
Wildlife.
Wildlife that's been living in there. Just, it's very disappointing.
Yep, I agree. All right, so under the consent agenda, we have minutes of the July 20th work session, a regular meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, pardon me, I was at attorney's report, my bad. Under new business, we have the first reading of proposed ordinance number 2121-496, an ordinance to amend Chapter 62, Article 4, Section 6277 of the Code of Ordinances, which is Charter Township of Ypsilanti to adjust sewage disposal rates. Court roll.
I have Charter Township of Ypsilanti proposed ordinance 2021-496, an ordinance to amend Chapter 62, Article 4, Section 62-77 of the Code of Ordinances, Charter Township of Ypsilanti to adjust sewage disposal rates. Be ordered by the Charter Township of Ypsilanti that Section 62-77 of Chapter 62, Article 4 of the Code of Ordinances be revised as follows. For all billings rendered prior to October 1st, 2021, existing sewage disposal service rates shall prevail. For all billings rendered on or after October 1st, 2021, charges for sewage disposal services shall be as follows for each bimonthly, two-month period. One readiness-to-serve rates based on the size of the meter. Meter size by inch and sewage rates as follows. 5/8 to 3/4, 1680, 1, 4201, 1 to 1 1/2, $84, 2 is 13441, 3, $420.03, 4 is $840.06, 6 is $1,680.11, 8 is $2,940.19, 10 is $4,620.30, 12 is $5,460.36, and then 2 is the commodity rate of 6, or $2.76 per 100 cubic feet. So move the first reading of the resolution.
We have a motion?
Support Eldridge.
And support Eldridge for the first reading, because this is an ordinance, we do required roll-call vote. Swanson?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Gerald Rowe?
Yes.
Stumbo votes yes. Eldridge?
Yes.
And Wilson?
Yes.
The first reading is approved. Yes, okay, I can. Stumbo voted yes. Okay. Number two is request to approve the reorganization of the Office of Community Standards and approval of two new positions, Community Compliance Director and Staff Planner.
Move to approve.
Support.
Motion, Wilson, support Eldridge. Is there a discussion on this? I know we discussed it at length in the work session, is there?
I had one thing, man.
Swanson?
So when I look at the flowchart, and I apologize for not mentioning this in the work session, I feel like having the sheriff's contract, just the way it's directly coming off the supervisor, it's still part of the Office of Community Standards. I think it would be better represented on the flowchart if the sheriff's department was like, it looks like there's one, two, three legs coming off of community standards, if there was a fourth leg that shows that contract, rather than it sitting out there all by itself, if I'm making sense with that saying.
Yeah, and actually, that was a good point, because it looks like the township supervisor and the sheriff's office, police service contract is on the same, really, you, you're correct, that it'll be a direct report to the supervisor, like the planning director, the compliance director, and the chief building official, that
Yep.
Until we can figure it out, and that's actually how it works now, and I think that is clear that way, and then it'd be clearer, John wouldn't have seen it kind of in the work session, remember it was grayed out? So that was a good, if it's okay with everyone, I think that's a good point, just to, yeah, we'll update, we'll update it, thank you. Any questions or comments on that? That are right with everybody? Thank you. So we have a motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number three is request to approve a provider change provision insurance and disability insurance?
So move Peterson.
Motion Peterson?
Swanson.
Support Swanson. This is the exact same benefits, and for a better rate for the township, will not negatively affect any employee or others, so that's good. We have a motion support, other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number four is a request to approve the gift donation and license abuse memorandum agreement with the Federal Emergency Management Act, FEMA, that's currently in the House.
So move Eldridge.
Support Wilson.
Motion Eldridge, support Wilson. This is a formal approval of the agreement, FEMA, we were honored to have them select Ypsilanti Township Civic Center as a site for the flooding that occurred in July. So they've been working out of here ever since the 24th or 26th, somewhere around that time of July, and they will conclude on August 19th, but we wanted to formally approve the agreement, since we didn't have a board meeting in August. So I think it was great, they were here seven days a week, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., available for residents and other community members throughout the area. Questions are coming? All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number five is request to authorize and approve the sale and/or removal of excess township equipment.
So move Gerald Rowe.
Support.
Motion Gerald Rowe, support Wilson. It's required that when we have older things, we, and we have to sell them and offer them for sale first, and if no one bids on them, then we can actually dispose of them. It's a process that we must follow, so. Some of the things are pretty old in there. Hopefully someone, we can
Correct.
...up around here. We, we also do this with computer equipment once a year. We have a motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number six, the request to waive the financial policy and approve AF Smith Electric to provide services to replace the house transformer at the hydro station in an amount not to exceed $17,480, which is budgeted.
So move Gerald Rowe.
Support.
Motion Gerald Rowe, support Eldridge. We discussed this in the work session, and AF Smith is a local electrical firm, and they're actually, they contacted three other bidders, and everyone's busy with electrical issues right now, so AF Smith, who we've used many times in Ypsilanti Township, submitted the bid, and it will be completed, I think, within three months, is what I think I heard him say. Questions are coming? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number eight is request to approve, oh, to waive the financial policy and approve the purchase of two sump pumps and accessories for fire headquarters from Hutzel Plumbing and Heating in an amount not to exceed $10,000, which is budgeted.
So move Gerald Rowe.
Support.
Motion Gerald Rowe, support Eldridge. The chief did have three bids, and this is the, or three quotes, and this is the lowest quote for the replacement of the sump pumps. I bet they've been working very hard with the rain. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number eight is a request to approve the 2021 L4029 form.
So move Gerald Rowe.
Support Peterson.
Motion Gerald Rowe, support Peterson. Discussion, discussion on this issue? So this, we have to adopt this every year, it sets the millage rates, and they were just approved in the August election, which was a very well-run election for the residents and the voters, and so we have to set this every year in order to start the budget process as well. We have a motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number nine is Budget Amendment Number Nine. It's to request to increase It's to request to increase, I missed that, increase, is it a, do you want me to do it?
Yeah, no, I can. Sorry. I have a motion to amend the 2021 budget, move to increase the bike sidewalk rec road fund by 501, $930 to $2,442, $528, and approve the department line item changes outlined. I would so move, and these are for Loonfeather Point Park, and our tree replacement fund is discussed in the work session.
Motion Gerald Row?
Support Eldridge.
Support Eldridge, is there questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying. There is no other business, and we did board member updates in the work session, so a motion to adjourn is in.
Support.
Peterson, support.
Wilson.
Yep, Wilson, and the time?
7:53.
7:53. Thank you. Thank you.
Do we want to vote on it?
I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying.